The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody, Town of Berlin. Town council meeting, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Joel Christensen.
Here.
Councilor Giannoni.
Here.
Mayor Fertinski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Padreiro.
Councilor Peonesa.
Here.
Councilor Russell. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we're on our next part of our agenda is our audience of citizens, so if anyone wishes to address the council on anything tonight on our agenda, or any other, whatever else, anyone wants to speak about, ask us about, town business, please come up to the microphone if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing no hands, nobody's rushing the microphone or the podium, so we'll go ahead and close that part of the meeting and we'll move on to our meeting agenda, starting with our consent agenda. We have two items on it.
Mayor, I'd like to add to the agenda item. A topic for amendment to the purchase and sale agreement for 861 Farmington Avenue and make that new business number 11.
Okay, motion second on that?
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. So now we're at our consent agenda, there's two items on the consent agenda which we have reviewed, the councilors have reviewed ahead of time, there's donations to the Berlin Peck Library and a donation to the Police Canine Program, so we'll take a motion on those.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the two items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second.
Thank you, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. So now we're onto our new business.
Yeah, agenda item number one for tonight is the presentation by the Central Connecticut Health District, it's their annual report, so they're here tonight to give us a presentation and tell us all the good stuff they're doing.
Great.
Sit down there, get out of the way.
Yeah, I guess we'll move down to the audience.
So we can see.
So you can see as well, that's a good thing. Wait for y'all to get set.
All right, we're going.
Yes, but that is powerful. Going Charlie.
Don't get your head on the TV screen, like I did last year, it hurts.
So first I'd like to introduce myself, my name is Charles Brown, I'm the health director for the Central Connecticut Health District, we serve the four towns of Berlin, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, and Newington, and tonight I have with me are the Chair of our Board of Health, Dr. Pat Checo, and we're going to be doing a little bit of tag team presentation tonight, so I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having us, and usually we have done this little dog and pony show long before now, so I just wanted to remind you that we're talking, even though it's 1819, we're talking about FY1718, when we throw numbers and finance stuff out to you. So some of this you've seen and heard before, we'll try to keep it as brief as we can because you know a lot about us, but obviously the job of local public health, all public health, is to prevent, promote, and protect, we prevent people hopefully from getting illnesses through things like vaccination, but we also do it through protecting things like food service, water supplies, your septic systems, and we try to promote a healthy lifestyle because we now know how important that is to our overall well-being. Quick history, the local health department serves the four towns of Berlin, Newington, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, and our population is just under 100,000. Founded in 1996, we've been around for 23 years, and we've been serving you for, I believe, around 20, and we provide a broad range of services. We came in, in the order of Weathersfield, then Rocky Hill joined at some point, then all of you joined, and finally Newington, which didn't join until the 2000s. So we think we've got a great community, we've got a lot of homogeneity in our populations, and I think we make a good four-town cluster. Little information about local health in Connecticut, our population is, as you know, a little bit around about 3.5 million, and local health districts provide public health services for 1.7 million of our residents in Connecticut, that's almost half of the population of Connecticut, and we've been around since the 60s and are one of the, I hate to say this, one of the few models of successful regionalization. A little more news about us, as you know, we have recently moved to our offices in Rocky Hill, and we hope to be inviting you in the next several weeks to an open house, to come and meet and greet and see the new space. We have 11 employees, five, two of those are part-time, nine are full-time, and we have over 50 active professional and lay volunteers who do things like flu clinics, who obviously help out in the joint preparations for preparedness that we share as communities and other things, and of course, the slaves that you send to the board as your representatives. This has been a long time coming, I think, as you know, we've been talking about it for over 10 years, we're not going to say much because we were here the last time to talk about it, but we do think that it's going to be a real benefit to everyone. Just so everyone knows how the board is put together, we have 14 members, and they are appointed based on population, so for every 10,000 people in our towns, plus any extra thereof, you are allowed one representative, and so Berlin has three, Newington has four, Rocky Hill has three, and Weathersfield also has three. At this time, before we move on to talking about public health in the 21st century, I'd like to introduce my colleagues to you, both well-known to you in the community, Ray Jirema, who is also one of you, and Ray and I go back many, many years to when we were both at the State Department of Health, and our newest board member, and we're so pleased to have you, Lisa Peonesa, and the good thing is she's been to a couple meetings and she's still coming back, so we're just delighted and we thank you for your commitment to what we do. I want to spend a little bit of my time talking about what a public health department is, I think there are still lots of people in the world, from the 50s and the 60s, who remember health department being the folks who went out and did your septic systems and looked at your food service and licensed them and got involved in water departments, and that was really the health department of the 20th century. There are actually statutes that require certain things to be done if you're going to be a full-time health department or district these days, and in 2014, the legislature passed statutes reflecting what a local health department in the 21st century should look like. So we now have, you can see what this says, each district department, and for whatever reasons, as legislatures do, they have separate statutes for municipalities and separate statutes for districts, but we all do the same thing. But in here, it says we shall ensure the provision of a basic health program that includes but is not limited to the following services, and these are the services we have come to call the 10 essential services, so if anybody, oops. What happened here? Yeah? Oh, you gave me a space. You threw me off, okay. Okay, so let's talk very quickly about what these are. We talk about assessment, policy development, and assurance, and those are just kind of big fancy words like every profession uses, but what they really come down to are these 10 things that we are expected to do. So we monitor the health and status of our residents to identify and solve community problems, and of course, we do this through things like surveillance and community health assessments, we investigate and diagnose health problems and health hazards in the community, and luckily, we have experienced very few of these together where we've had a large outbreak that involved your community that we had to come into. We move into informing and educating, empowering people in our community as it relates to health issues. We mobilize community partnerships in action to identify and solve health problems for people in the community. We develop policies and plans that support individual and community health efforts. You're hearing the word "community" a lot, and I think that's really important for us to remember that we are truly, hopefully, partners in everything we're doing. Connect people in the community to needed health services when appropriate. Assess a competent public health and personnel care workforce to make sure that the services people need to have are available and that they can get to them. And finally, then evaluate our effectiveness, the accessibility and quality of personal and population health-based care, and finally, research to look at new solutions to health So I'm going to very quickly use an example of how we are different from healthcare, but I'm going to use something that's been in the news a lot lately, we're not using the old influenza example, we're going to talk about measles, because I think it's something that's really in people's faces and in the public right now, and the threat of lack of vaccination is so critical to our health. So, what does the healthcare system do? And I don't mean to show any bias particularly to my friends in healthcare systems, however, they take care of people one at a time, and they deal with the issue in front of them one at a time. Think about your own visits to doctors' offices, if it's your annual checkup, don't you dare talk about that other condition you're concerned about. So what would they do, what are their responsibilities, what is their take on their role in measles? They certainly are the ones who provide the MMR shots to children and adults, following the pertinent laws and recommendations. They diagnose and treat cases, now in this particular situation, even though measles has been around for a long, long time, there's still no treatment, so you get better and hopefully you don't get worse. And they report it to the state of Connecticut and the local health department because it is one of the number-one things that requires a phone call as soon as it is identified. We, on the other hand, the public health response, and I like to think of us as we take care of all the people all the time, across all ages and all conditions. So first of all, public information campaigns, unfortunately, this is one where there still seems to be a great deal of misinformation out there, and it is our duty to really try to educate people around why it is so important to be immunized, to have the herd immunity. People have a tendency in this day and age, because, I know there are many of us, well, let me check, how many of you have had measles? But there's a whole population out there that's never seen it, and there's a belief that if you haven't seen it, the germ isn't out there anymore. It's kind of like HIV. We now have another generation of people beginning to watch their friends die, because they were not part of the generation that it all started with. We also need to respond to all reported cases within our jurisdiction, and that means an actual follow-up, evaluating people who may have been exposed, determining whether people need to be immunized, et cetera. We may employ targeted or mass vaccination clinics in response to an outbreak, hopefully with measles, it's relatively rare, and unless we had a case, say, at the girls' basketball game where a whole lot of people might have been really exposed, these would probably be relatively small. And finally, we promote policies and laws that require vaccination of children at various ages and to enter school, and some of you who are old enough to have gone back to school when you were 30 or 35 may have found out that all of a sudden you had to get re-immunized to go back to school as well. And finally, it is our job to inform and assure parents of how the vaccine works, the need for herd immunity and its efficacy and safety, and my last posturing, if you want to call it that, is to assure and evaluate coverage through immunization surveys and record review. The sad thing is that this particular vaccine has been around for a very long time and is very efficient, and yet, if you look at our track record with vaccines, the only disease we've ever been able to eradicate in the world is smallpox. Came close a few times with measles, but it's smallpox. So the other thing is that, before I turn this over to Charlie, we do a lot more today with what we call policy systems and environmental changes, and those things consider the environment as both the outdoor, which people always think of as environment, but also our inner environment, which are social norms, our behaviors, in order to prevent disease, and we really focus a great deal more on something we've talked about since the 50s, but has caught on with communities and people more recently, which we call the social determinants of health. So the things that we need to change in our society to truly make us a healthy population. And now I will turn this over to Charlie, thank you.
So I get to talk about the bottom-line stuff. So we'll start off our bottom-line things with the revenues for the health district from 2017, 2018, our most recently audited fiscal year. So for that year, we actually had a little over $1.1 million in revenue, the revenue comes in large part from the contributions for our towns, back in fiscal years 1718, our per capita contribution was $5.75 per person for all the folks that are in our district. So that totaled to about $560,000. We had program revenue, generally this is from things like our flu shots or programs that we would put on and we would actually charge fees for, in addition to that, the license fees that we have for restaurants and for plan reviews and things of that nature contribute to that number. We also have grants for about $319,000, and that's a combination of federal, state, and other grants that we have, and a little bit of interest income as well. Expenditures, we're a service agency, so generally we don't make widgets, so we don't have a lot of costs along those lines, our costs really are in the salaries and benefits that we provide to our professional employees, we do have some professional contracts, our operating expenses for that year were about $127,000, as well as some other expenses to the tune of about $10,000. So the good news is, if you looked, noticed the number at the beginning was 1.15, our expenditures are 1.11, so that means that we're actually operating in the black for that year. Talk a little bit about the purpose of public health agency, it would be nice for everybody to be able to walk up to the pharmacy and order an ounce of prevention, unfortunately, we can't do that. So public health really works very hard to do a lot of the things that Pat was saying in our 10 essential services, so how we prevent epidemics and spread of disease, protect against environmental hazards, prevent injuries, promote and encourage healthy behaviors, respond to disasters, and really assure the quality of health services. So I'm going to go into a little bit about what we've done in the past year since we've seen you, to really address all of these issues. So preventing the spread of disease, as Pat said, that was really one of the main things that we as a public health agency do, we give a lot of flu shots. Last year, we actually gave over 2,000 flu shots, and the average time from when somebody walked into one of our clinics to when they walked out was about three minutes from door to door, if they had their forms filled out and were ready to get the shots. But in addition to that, we actually do follow-up with a lot of other diseases like hepatitis A, B, and C, salmonella, we do investigations for lead poisoning in children, we also follow-up, as Pat said, on things like vaccine-preventable diseases and measles and cases of Legionella. We also look at how disease spread from vectors, and many times, especially as the weather starts to warm up, things like mosquitoes and tick-borne diseases start to crop up, things like West Nile, Eastern equine encephalitis, Zika, which of course, we heard a lot about last year, but is endemic in our area, thank goodness, but the tick-borne diseases like Lyme disease or licheosis and babesiosis are actually also very endemic in this area, so we actually do a lot of follow-up with respect to this and education on those particular diseases. In the past three, two and a half, three years, we've actually done a lot of response to another disease, the disease of opioid addiction. So CCHD has really been the convener of local response agencies around this particular topic, we held our third stakeholder forum back in July of 2018, and we currently have work groups that are continuing to address on a regular basis, prevention, response, and recovery from substance abuse disorder. We have good news to report, here in December, we were awarded a two-year grant from the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services to work with persons suffering from addiction and their families. So we actually had funding to be able to bring our health educator up to serve as program coordinator for this, we have him trained as a recovery specialist to be able to coach people along that are looking to recover from this disease, so we're delighted to be able to work with folks from the community, and we'll continue to do that. Joey, and actually, Joey, you're as part of our recovery work group, correct? Yeah, so we actually use a lot of volunteers to be able to make this happen, so we really appreciate that. Protecting against environmental hazards, our environmental health staff do a lot of inspections, so last year, we did over 1,700 inspections around food service, temporary events, septic pools, motels, and salon inspections. In addition to that, we respond to complaints, so about 221 complaints, the majority of those being housing, property maintenance issues, but also a lot of hoarding issues, we were seeing unsanitary conditions, food-related, not a lot of those, but the majority are really the, around the housing and really hoarding and unsanitary conditions. Our Putting on Air program, which is our asthma education program, we do actual home visits to patients that are referred to us from both acute care facilities and their doctors, school nurses, where we have environmental health professionals that go in with asthma health educators and actually do visits in the home with the parents to talk about the triggers to their asthma. So the environmental health inspectors actually do an inspection to determine if there's things that need to be fixed, there's things that they can correct, and the asthma health educator spends their time talking about the medications that they may have and how they use them in their asthma action plan to really keep them healthy. Additionally, we also do a lot of radon kit distributions and lead poisoning prevention. We've actually spent a lot of time with outreach to rental properties within the four towns that we have, but one thing that we want to make sure everybody's aware, it's not just peeling paint, which is what people think about when they think about lead and lead poisoning, what we've seen recently is that there's a lot of exposure that we get through toys from overseas, spices, jewelry, religious artifacts, and one thing that we've found here in the past couple of years, actually pressure cookers that have had lead seals where the pressure releases, so we found that through investigation of an actual poisoned child. So we're getting that information out to our communities to make sure that they're aware that lead does exist in a lot of these imported articles, and we do follow-up and do education on those. Preventing injuries, we have bike helmets that we sell for 10 bucks a head, get it, 10 bucks a head? So yeah, thank you for laughing at that. But as the weather gets warmer, you know, that's one thing that we want to assure that people have the availability for their kids and grandkids as they're going out there, being more active to protect themselves from injury. In addition to that, we do a lot of Facebook reminders for things like recalls, so that people are aware of what's going on around them so that they can protect themselves. We promote and encourage healthy behaviors, hey, look at that guy with the big trophy, recognize him? Well, Berlin won our overall competition last year once again for 2018, so so far, you guys, ever since we opened it to the public, have been the only town that has won, so congratulations for that. I will say this, the other towns are gunning for you. So I've had, we've had a lot of conversations as we go from town to town and do these presentations, and every time they see this, there's a little bit of a eyes tightening and, oh, we're going to get them this year. Last year, Rocky Hill won for the Impact Award, which was for the highest participation, they had the most people out there walking during our competition, so that's coming up here in April when we're going to start again, so get out there and get walking when you have a good day so that you're warmed up and ready to go. Other things that we do to promote and encourage healthy behaviors, we have our Living Healthy in the District Guide, which has things about farmers' markets and places to get healthy food, trails, and other information along those lines, we provide training sessions on things like ticks and what you need to know, and we also are involved in policy. So we're actually working right now with the Town of Weathersfield, as they develop a complete streets policy that deals with how bikability, walkability, and all the interactions between that and motor vehicles happen within their communities, and these are something that we're going to be looking at in all the communities that we serve. Tobacco use cessation is another thing, policy-related, and things like how our towns actually have policies in place about non-smoking in parks and things of that nature. So preparing for responding to disasters, we use our flu clinics every year to actually test our preparedness plans, so we use them as drills for medical countermeasure dispensing. We can't say enough, and thank you to all the volunteers that we have, because we could not do this without, every year, they come out and actually help us to test our plans, and I do believe that as a health district, we're probably one of the most prepared in the state just because of that constant practice every year. But in addition to flu and those types of responses, there's other things that we plan for, like flooding and other natural disasters, as we're looking at things like climate change, how we actually respond to those things are things that we have to consider. Assuring the quality and accessibility of health services, we provide free dental cleanings for seniors, free oral health screenings, last year, we provided 117 different screenings to clients in our four towns, yeah, and that is through a grant with the North Central Agency Area Agency on Aging, so we actually get funded to be able to do that, and we're happy to do it, because as many of you know, oral health as we get older is so important to the overall health of the individual and to the community as a whole. As we prepare for the future, we're still looking at national public health accreditation, but mostly through the lens of quality improvement, how can we make our policies and procedures better as we're doing our jobs, and also looking at administrative and health policies, so revising our codes to adapt to a modern-day society, as Pat said. So the biggest thing that we're going to be doing this year is once again, looking at the adoption of the FDA Food Code, which is a huge paradigm shift for our inspectors. So last words for you is thanks. Thanks to all our member towns, to you and our public for your continued support, if you're looking for more information, please visit our website, and we stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks Charlie, Pat, our members, we appreciate all the things you do for us, and be as safe, as safe as possible, so thank you for all your hard work.
Well, thank you.
If there's any questions, I will be there on the phone, and we'll get back up there and continue with every...
Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much.
Excuse me. You got me hooked on that darn show. It's pretty good. You'd figure.
Lost the mayor. Grabbed the good cattle?
I guess you should, just take over. Just like Casper Weinberg.
Yeah, why not?
Look, I can't dig down and find out what's going on. Next is the, you got, there's evidence of rumors being there, right? Because they found there's.
Thanks. It's calm.
Yeah.
Okay, agenda item number two is the police department expansion feasibility study. Doug Soluk is here. I believe members of the Building Commission are here to discuss the results of the recent space needs study, so I'll turn it over to Brian.
Good evening. I'm Brian Puskowski with the Public Building Commission.
How you doing, Brian?
Just wanted to give a brief summary of kind of the process to date before we'd asked the representatives from STV to kind of run through their report on the screen here. As you're aware, the town council had submitted a statement of need from the Police Commission to the Public Building Commission asking for us to look at, a high-level look at the feasibility of expanding the police department down on the first floor and taking over the board of ed space, including coming up with a cost estimate of what that may take. We sent out an RFQ to hire a consultant to do a test fit for the space. STV was the only response to the RFQ. The Public Building Commission was very comfortable working with them as they had an extensive experience working with us on the last time at Farmington Ave when we were looking at the police station there. So they were familiar with the statement of need as well as the requirements of the department. Through the process, STV worked with the police department, met with the chief, walked the space, et cetera. They provided us a draft report sometime in late September, early October. The Public Building Commission reviewed that report, had some questions, clarifications. And then sometime in early November, middle of November, we were able to finalize the report. It's taken a little while to get to the town council just because of the holidays and everyone's scheduled to make this work and coordinate. Before I turn it over to STV, I just wanted to comment that one thing that's not in the report that we didn't do that wasn't part of our mission per se was to look at what would happen to the board of ed if they vacated the space downstairs. They currently use about 11,000 square feet down there. I think about 8,000 of it is office space and about 3,000 more storage type, but that was not part of this report or anything that we looked at. And with that, I'll ask.
Hey Brian, so did you, so that space, what happens to the board of ed? And I mean, we've talked to the board of ed a little bit, I've talked to the superintendent about it, but so that, that space, and I'll probably cover in your presentation, but it is included in your, did we include all their space?
Correct. The whole, the whole first floor area would, was, and you'll see, as you said, on the diagrams. So it was assumed that they completely vacated the space.
Yeah, I mean, they, in initial discussions, I mean, we have a long way to go, obviously, but they, they had, you know, the superintendent said he would, you know, vacate as long as we obviously have to find some other space for them, which we would. They understand if that's, if that ultimately is the plan, then we recognize that's what would have to happen. I guess maybe we have to, or can we, you want to go back down or do we want to watch it? We'll just watch it.
See, actually, all I really have is what's in front of you in the report.
Okay.
It's probably more for the use of the public.
The audience, we got it here.
Some of the pictures, pretty pictures. My name is Geraldine Haroff. I'm a senior project manager at STV in Hartford. As a little background, what we do is assist municipalities, corporations, small nonprofits, people that don't have a full-time facilities department or need some staff augmentation in some specialized areas in order to produce things like this feasibility report. Also, we also manage pre-construction and construction services for clients as well. So we take projects from the very early planning stages to post-occupancy and any piece of that. So in the case of this project, we know we were asked to provide a very high-level assessment of the feasibility of moving the police department into the entire lower level of the building. As Brian said, it did not include consideration for the uses that were already there. I know that most of it is board of ed. I think there's some town storage functions down there as well. Another, sort of a related assumption is that the shooting range would also move someplace else. So the police department would inhabit the entire lower level. We used the space needs study that was produced in 2015 for Jankunsky Hume, by Jankunsky Humes. Did not revisit any of that information or any of the assumptions. They projected growth through 2027. The most we did was sit with the chief and review where the 2015 study, how accurate it was now in 2018, and looked at some of the projections out to 2027 to see whether, whether they were still sort of valid on a very broad level. And the reason we did that is because there is about 24,000 square feet on the lower level of this building. The original Jankunsky Humes study said that if you were building new, you would need about 26,000 square feet. It's sort of within a margin of error to say, yeah, we could probably squeeze those functions into the 24,000 that's available downstairs, but it would require eliminating some of the other things that are still there. So we looked at, this actually is a diagram of the existing police department. So you can see visually, they do currently occupy 13,000 of the 24,000 square feet. And they are, and based on my tour of the space and speaking with the chief, they're a little squeezed at this point. So in addition to not being able to absorb any growth in the future, some of their functions, I think, are a little inhibited right now by the, by the lack of space. What we did, what we did as, now I don't have the right plan up there. In looking at the possibility of moving into the entire floor. I find my new diagram. The charge for this feasibility study was to, as I said, do a high-level analysis of how the, how the space would fit. We looked at it in terms of not down to the, not down to the exact square footage, but we looked at how, excuse me, how the, how the departments would need, excuse me, would need to be arranged and what adjacencies were necessary for the departments to function adequately. So there we go. The result of that was a very schematic diagram that indicates, in just a sort of a graphic way, that yes, all of the department functions would fit in some way in the proper, with the proper adjacencies adequately into the square footage that's available. Some of the things we looked at that influenced this assignment of spaces throughout the building were separating public access from staff access, from detainee drop-off. We looked at keeping the communication center and the IT functions in the spot where they are because of the cost there would be to move that equipment to someplace else in the building. We looked at what, what functions require windows, what functions shouldn't have windows. And at the end of the day, found that we could in fact locate all of the existing functions or sub-departments of the police department into the lower-level space in a way that would be reasonable and would function well. As I said, we did not look at the exact square footage, where is each office, how do the corridors run? That would be part of a next step. Our charge at this point was to provide you a reasonable, yes, we believe based on our professional judgment that the space will work for the police department. And then we moved on to a budget assessment that was also very high-level, basically just taking the square footage that was available and using some industry standards to assign a square footage cost for construction today, or consultant costs that would be associated with the planning and the construction of the space, looked at some very basic square footage costs for replacing furniture and equipment, and then through a healthy 20% contingency on top of it all, so that whatever decisions are made on the details would be reasonably afforded in a six, what we have is a 6.8 million-dollar project. I think that that is a conservative estimate, but it really, it really requires more in-depth study, both of the condition of the building and, and whether, when we get down to the details of 120 square-foot offices, how they'll, how they'll fit into the existing space.
Thank you for that.
Do you have any questions about the study itself? Happy to, or about the space? I can answer those questions.
One question now also, so just, so, so everybody here understands for the benefit of the audience that, you know, this was something we decided to do. It's very preliminary. It was done with some discussions with the chief, the police commission, and others in the town, the council, obviously, just in light of the, going back a couple of years, the vote on the police station was voted down. So we just, there was no real plan that we had to look at, is this feasible to do to move downstairs and to give the police department what they need, the space they need in the location that they're at? So hence, that's, that's where we're at. So as you mentioned, this is very, you know, preliminary for all of us in town. You know, we have to have more discussions, obviously, with everybody involved and move forward with it. One question I have before I'll open it up to the rest of the council is just, so, you know, the next item on the agenda, we're looking at our cell, jail cells have to be renovated and along with that, there may be something with the locker room as well. You know, before we go too far down the road, I don't know if you looked at this, you know, John or, or Public Building, but we don't want to certainly renovate the cells and perhaps the locker room is part of that project. And then we go further with, let's say we decide to do this renovation, you know, we don't want to have to redo it if that doesn't fit in with what plan. And I know it's still preliminary plans, but I don't know if we ever, Brian, or if we ever even looked at that piece of it yet.
We didn't, no. We, I, we didn't, I didn't.
Okay.
Because that information wasn't available to us.
Okay.
I will say that, and I will also say that, that when you retain an architect and engineering firm to take it to the next step, to really look at the schematic design and the detail of what would be a next step of feasibility, they may not agree with anything that I've, that I've done here in terms of assigning space. But I will say that in my diagram, I kept the locker rooms essentially where they are and just expanded them. So there, I think that there, so I think that that's probably a good idea and could probably factor into the, in terms of improving locker space.
The jails, the jail cells stay the same place?
We did not keep, I did not keep the jail cells in the same space because I think that they, as I recall, required a significant expansion and then also the addition of separate youth facilities.
Right.
So, you know, I took some of the, what is essentially the storage from V O E right now and kind of put that department in that area, but, you know, somebody else might see something different. I will say that based on where the jail cells are now, you do sort of land lock them, you know, if you keep them, if you improve them now, you do restrict your ability to be flexible about how you flow through that, the rest of that space. Not impossible, but, but I think, yeah, the two things should be examined together. Timing of, of any overall renovation with, with an interim renovation.
Yeah, okay, so that's something we'll have to discuss with the, with the chief and the police commission and the council and Public Building and we'll get everybody involved to figure that out before we move forward with that piece of it. Oh, okay, any, you guys have any other questions, Joanne? Anybody? Questions?
I know that you said the 6.8 million is a conservative figure. And I know this is very preliminary, but I don't know really quite how to term it. What's the margin of error like? In other words, you know, how high could, could this, how off could this figure be?
The 6.8 is a budget, it's a current, you know, projection. Like I said, it has a 20% contingency on it, which is why we say it's a conservative number because we think that we've, we've thrown a lot of extra in there, but it's really, I can't, can't be any more exact until you get a little bit further down the feasibility road. I think what Brian's going to speak to, the next steps, and some of those would give you a lot more certainty on what the budget would be and how to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
List of sort of, we talked about steps. Let me sit down. Look at this, Pat. I'll pass it up.
So the Public Building Commission felt, in consultation with STV, that the real next step is to take it to a further design, hire, hire an architect and engineering firm and really put walls to those spaces. As you saw on the diagram, it was really, could this fit all within the building? Then you got to add hallways and all the flow and all of that. So the next step would really be taking it to the next level. At that point, we'd come up with a new budget, you'd have a lot more detailed information as part of that than you did those schematic designs. So to her point, as we go through the process, the budget will get, say, better and better each time, but having the 20% contingency in there was kind of a, a safety factor at this point because there's just a lot of unknowns, including, you know, what may have to be done to the site outside because as you mentioned, there's a number of different entrances, there's a public entrance, private entrance. As it is material review, those types of things are all a little bit unknown at this point.
Yeah, I mean, the question is that firing range, because I know, I don't think they've used it in years, right? Cut it down, right? For contamination, I'm assuming? So what would happen with that? That would be, I guess, removed?
Would have to, yeah.
Yeah, abated, obviously, right? Yeah.
Yeah, the design, the space, I think you mentioned, there is no fire indoor, there's no firing range in this building. Fit in the space, but there's no space for that here.
So that would be removed.
An additional need.
Right. Okay. So, so we'll have to, you know, I think we all, obviously, just the first time the council's seeing this, I think the police commission just, you just saw this recently tonight. Chief, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but, yeah, I mean, we've sort of all just seen it, so we'll, you know, we'll definitely have some more discussions before we get to the next step. But obviously, I think we may need the next step because we really don't have enough information here to probably make the right decision until we go further, as you mentioned, to really know what, what the cost may be and how it would really look, right? With a, or final design, how we fit it into that spot, so.
I think we just got a request that may need about $30,000. That doesn't necessarily guarantee we'll get everything done on that list.
Right.
We obviously do an RFP and sort of look to price all the different pieces out on that, on that list. But we felt that that was a reasonable amount that would need to be expended to sort of get you to a, a next point.
Right.
Couple things.
Yes.
I know that when I first got on the council, maybe with Charlie too, we did spend some money, approved some money to clean up the pistol range, do some abatement there, so I don't know how much there is left to do of that. But, you know, the decision was to build a new police station, for me anyways, there was always the possibility, what about this base here? And even though the previous architect did a very well-written And even though the previous architect did a very well-written, you know, opinion about the space here, did move forward, or wasn't directed, the council didn't direct it at that time, to move forward with the study so that we could do our due diligence for the taxpayers. What would it cost? You know, I'm not saying, believe that would be the best thing to do, but at least you have the options and you can look at it a little more reasonably. This is what it's going to cost to do the town hall more level versus a new building somewhere else. And that's why I'm going to be in support of pushing this forward. I'd like to know what it would be.
Anything else? Ladies and gentlemen? So I guess, so tonight, so you're looking for the 30 grand, right? More, Brian, is what you want to do the further? I mean, it seems like we don't have enough information to really make an informed decision without taking that additional step. If, I mean, we have the chairman of the police commission, member of the police commission, and John, the chief, is here, obviously, but, I mean, we haven't really talked about this at all. So, I mean, we can wait till the next meeting and talk about it a little bit informally. Or if you guys think, you know, you're welcome to come up and speak to this. If you think we want, you think it makes sense to go to the next step or to the police commission to get what we need. Really don't have enough to make a decision, I don't think. What do you, you guys? Yeah? Okay, right. Yeah.
I agree we should move forward.
Okay.
And also, with that 30,000 being something, maybe we can answer the question, is the cell
Yeah, right.
Going to be well spent.
Right, yeah, because we don't have the answer to that either, so before we do that. So, all right, so, so with that in mind, appreciate that input from everybody, so we can...
Okay, I got it. They will make a motion to fund the schematic design for the police department feasibility study for an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second, thank you.
Yes. One issue with this is we don't have $30,000 anywhere in the budget spent.
Okay, well, that's an issue. That's another issue. Okay, well, I thought maybe somebody should bring that up. Well, we'll pass the hat around. You guys kick in whatever you feel is appropriate. We'll go, we'll go to GoFundMe page and we'll see what we can come up with. Okay.
I need to bear bad news.
Okay, well, that's what your job is, Jack, good and bad. Mostly bad lately, but it's okay, you know. It's all right. So with that in mind, do we want to look for that money first before we perhaps?
I would prefer that we look for money first.
So let's, if you guys agree, we will go ahead and withdraw that motion? Okay. And let's see if we can find the 30 grand somewhere.
Thank you.
That's a good idea. All right. Come on with that. That was an easy decision, see? No money, no, no motion.
No action for now?
Yeah, no action on that for now.
Okay. Always willing to help.
That's good. So number three?
Number three is to award the bid for the amendment for renovations of the police, Birlin Police Station jail cells. And Doug Soluk is here to discuss that. We need to transfer, there's a transfer that's required for this. And you have to take this to a special town meeting to be scheduled for March 5th. So Doug is here to discuss the, any of the information.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Brian, thank you. You guys.
Evening, how are you?
How are you, Doug? So what we got to do, we just got to, so we're adding to the, we already have some funds, right? For this?
We have funds, we just need to transfer.
We have funds, we need more?
No, we need to transfer them.
Transfer them, okay.
It's a kind of transfer.
Gotcha. So we just have to, so we just got a special town meeting, okay. Anything to add, Doug? What do we want to say?
It's been about a year in the works.
Yes.
Design, the bidding, teaming up with Orange right now to do the project. So we're really close. If we can get the money transferred and award the bid. Goal would be, you know, sometime of summer, summer completion for the project. They'll give the P D some relief, get up the code of what we've been working on and potentially have some funding left over after to work on the locker rooms, potentially in their interrogation room.
Okay. All right. I know we've been working on this a while. Appreciate all the hard work, everybody in the town staff, and everybody's trying to get this done. Obviously, we know we had a safety slash liability issue with the jail cells, which is why this has come to, you know, fruition now. So we need to move this forward, so.
There's actually some other communities are starting to follow our approach, what we're doing with Orange.
Oh.
So it's working out the cooperative agreements and getting some aggressive pricing. There seems to be an interest in this refurbishing of the cells per se.
I'd say as a reminder, Jack or Doug, the budget amount was a lot higher than this, right? Initially, when we first started looking at with the three towns?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and then actually, there's quite a bit of contingency worked into this proposed budget for the project, just to cover everything. We hope to give that back and not need it, but it's there. So we want to be covered upfront before we begin anything.
Sure.
And then the cell doors, our understanding too, is that we can repurpose them, move them around. If we were to expand downstairs.
Okay.
So it's, yeah.
Throw money out.
There's, we can reuse the upfronts.
Completely different design than what's down there now.
Correct, yeah.
So my question would be, what would be the financial impact, if you know, of repurposing them? I envision there's some sort of special, you can't just hire a regular person, handyman, to move these types of things, you know? So I'd imagine there is some additional cost associated with it. Do you know, have any idea of how much it would cost? Because if it, if they're $220,000 and then it costs $150,000 to repurpose them, it's just kind of cost prohibitive at that point? So what do you think?
We don't have a full comparison on that financial impact. But if we were to expand downstairs, it would be a lot of money we've already spent. We'd have to spend some more to relocate and expand on based on what this next round of design would cover. Dispatch was just, dispatch center was just remodeled, the radio system. So there, you know, we're going to impact a lot of areas downstairs if we, if we do expand, so. Certainly, like you said, we're not hanging closet doors, but relocate them and move them would have to be further discussed and evaluated.
Are the doors the most expensive part of the project? They're going to put some ventilation in there, right? And some different?
Well, M E P upgrades, ventilation, and then the cell doors.
Doors are larger?
Share, it's, I'm looking up in the project budget, or we can follow up and share that with you.
Okay, yeah.
When it breaks out.
Yeah, so, yeah, Alex, right, that would answer that, how much if cell doors are a large part of it? Then if we can move them, that's good. Yeah.
Hopefully, the final design can leave them where they are, or at least use them efficiently. But I think the total renovation, especially doing it in steps, is years away. And I don't think we can afford to wait on this. It's been overdue now. I understand we're not meeting federal law, and it's a safety and liability issue, like you pointed out. So I think we should still move forward with this.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. I mean, I think we'll certainly move forward with this. And just if we can make sure we at least get those cost figures, you know? And obviously, we're not even close to a design. I would, I would think we could design around them. It's what would be my hope if we go forward, if we do go forward with the renovation, we can design around them and, you know, keep them in place. As well as if we, you know, fix the locker room too. But, so, yeah, just, so we just need to talk about a few more things. But with this, yeah, I mean, we should move forward with this part, so.
Okay, I'm going to just say I agree with Charlie's assessment there. We have to move forward for the safety reasons. But I will abstain from this as I do a lot of work with the selected G C, so we'll read the motion, but I'll...
Okay. All right, so if we have no more questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to set a special town meeting on Tuesday.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. You can't read the motion.
Why can't you? You're right.
Okay, all right, I, I'm going to need to have Alex read it, please. That's okay. I looked at Jennifer and she looked at me and, okay. But, and then have somebody please second it. Thank you.
Got it.
I can do it. Here we go. Move to set a special town meeting on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 6:45 P M to approve the transfer of $221,165 from the Griswold Relocatable Classroom Fund to the Police Station Construction Fund to cover the cost to renovate jail cells at the police department.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Three none?
Yes, real quick.
Yes, yeah.
Extra money for renovation of the locker rooms? Do you have anything in mind specifically? I'm just curious, because I know that when I took a tour with the chief, you mentioned that there was no A C in there and that was something that was important to him. Is that something that can be renovated or added to the locker rooms?
Yeah, the goal is that if we don't have to utilize any contingency for this project, remaining funds can be appropriated, repurposed for additional renovations, remodeling.
Perfect, thank you.
Include the locker rooms or? Any other requests?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? So hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention. Okay, so we'll move that forward. Thanks, Doug, for our next, our next meeting.
Jim, item number four is the replacement of the police commissioner Peters. I believe you have an application before you?
Yes, we do. We, you know, we've, I know the police commission, I've spoken to chairman who's here, Mr. Eschew and Mr. Wilson, two members of the police commission. They've looked at different candidates. They have identified Mr. Rogan. He obviously will be filling that, the spot of Mr. Peters. That's till the end of his term, which is in November. So he would just be filling that spot. They've done, you know, background and extensive interviews. So they've recommended Dave Rogan as the, as the replacement. So if, you know, you guys have any questions? Police commission chairman is here. If not, you take a motion.
I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Dave Rogan to fill out the remainder of Peters' term on the police commission.
Second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, moved. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Rogan.
Jim, item number five is to set a public hearing for the ordinance to obtain, excuse me, upgrade the radio system. As I think you know, the radio system for the fire department is in need of upgrade. We recently put some money into it to patch it so that it goes through another, for a certain amount of time. Down the road, it does need to be upgraded. This is a request to start the process, to have Joe Fozzie start putting together the bond, bond authorization documents. Simon is here to answer questions about the radio system.
Come on up. While you're here, you don't want to sit there for nothing, right? Want to come up and talk to us? Sure you do. Good, always glad to hear from you. It wasn't passed out, was it passed out previously? Yeah, the cost, the question, yeah.
So when we began this process, obviously, we began this process to replace the fire department radio system because it's aging and will not be able to be water band, narrow banded. Right now, we're half narrow banded, but the next coming out will be water band. Many of the radios now won't be able to do that that we currently have. Many of the larger components, such as the microwave systems and transmitters and repeaters, are not supported by Motorola anymore, need to be replaced. So it's 20-plus years old, it's time to replace it. The one thing that we put in for a million dollars, and we kind of maintain that million dollars, but then when we began to really take a look at it, there's a lot of other components that we were leaving out. So I thought it was better that we include those components in here as just a complete radio system for the town of Birlin. So not only do you have the top section, which is the fire department radios, and then you have the main repeaters for fire department and D P W, but also I've included the components for D P W, for emergency management, for the fire marshals, so that it would be a complete system with the ability to communicate, the ability to go digital, townwide. And unfortunately, it's a little more pricey. There's a 20% contingency included in there. And those are figures that we have through looking with different vendors. Basically said, okay, this is what we're looking to do and what's it going to cost? We're meeting again with another vendor next Tuesday night, actually. So we're still out there looking at different vendors and then looking at different avenues. But because we need to get the process started, we had to come up with some information and figures.
Did we, did we fix some stuff already, or no?
Fixed a transmitter and a voter.
Okay. To keep it running, so.
Correct. We're going just under $30,000 for those two pieces.
Otherwise, we were, some issues, right? Some serious issues, yeah. Got it. Got it. Okay, you know, ran, ran into this, obviously, with the police department. We had, you know, a 30-year-old system with them. We've obviously completed that and, you know, as of course, time marches on, we know that's what happens with our radio systems. And there's obviously many more advances than we've had in our old one. I know it's, you know, on the ropes, so I understand that. So any questions for Mr. Simon?
Yes, sir.
Is the system compatible with the surrounding towns? There was some discussion analog and digital.
I don't quite understand at all.
This analog's your old TV, digital's your new TV. You have much more clarity through that.
So will this?
Yes.
Be compatible with?
This will be, this is compatible with not only the surrounding towns, but the state system that's out there with the tri-band interoperability radios. The surrounding towns are task force, we call it Task Force 51, which is Weathersfield, Rocky Hill, Cromwell, Birlin, and Newington. They're currently looking to do something like this the same way. They're looking at a state grant, I believe through C C M, but I'm not 100% sure on that, to put interoperability radios into the other town trucks that would also be interfaced with ours. So yes. Currently, we use what's called a stocks box. A stocks box is a portable two-radio, one is the battery or the power unit, and one is the radios that we have to go out and we set up. And then we crossband everything together. This will take care of all that stuff.
The initial call for an emergency comes into our police dispatch center?
Correct.
And then it calls to the fire department from there?
Correct. Well, they'll dispatch it out to the police. So, so when a 911's received, the dispatcher automatically notifies the emergency agency that's going to respond, whether it's police, fire, or E M S.
Okay, what I'm getting at, will any of the renovations, if it happens to the police area, will that affect this new fire system? I don't want to double spend again.
No.
No? Good.
No. Those are just transmitters that are located down there. The renovations sort of police department and Chief Fitzgerald, or Chief Fitzgerald, Chief Klett, who just left, oh, the actual dispatch councils and everything else. This, this equipment will be plug and play into those councils.
You know, in our phase, we're all in.
Correct.
Any questions? So, so what, so we have tonight is just a?
I want to set the public hearing.
Yeah, we're just setting the?
To authorize the documents thrown out.
Yeah, that's all we're doing, right? Okay, so, and take a motion?
Okay, I move to authorize the town manager to retain the services of Joseph Fozzie L L C to prepare bond authorization documents for executing contracts, purchase, installation, and other related costs for the fire, radio system upgrade, and to authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise for Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 7:00 P M to hold a public hearing and an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Appropriating $1,440,000 for the Radio System Upgrade," and authorizing the issue of $1,440,000 of bonds for the town to meet said appropriation, pending issuance thereof, making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, moved? Hey, you know, Jim, so you did mention the magic word there in the other towns, not us, but grant? Yep. So, so I was just...
So looking at grants, looking around?
Yeah.
You have more chance to receive a grant if you do a multi-town. So that's why they're looking to do that there. And they haven't located one yet that, from what I understand, and I don't sit on the task force committee anymore. From what I understand, they're looking at C C M for some type of grant coming out of there. Are there grants out there? I mean, we can put some feelers out there. I mean, we can put some feelers out to see if there's any funds out there for, for grants for municipality radios.
Yeah, we should, we should, uh, use Jim Mahoney. He's, uh, been pretty successful in being able to find grants for us, so if you would just contact Jim.
Great, thanks. Go ahead, Jim. Okay.
Six. Agenda item number six, this was brought before you at the last meeting, it's being brought before you again. Uh, I think you requested some more information on the golf rounds and how they're being recouped. So John Zook is here to discuss the donation of golf round and carts to Xavier High School, the annual auction, and then probably just to give you some more information that you requested at the last meeting.
Hey, John.
How are you?
Good.
What I have here tonight is basically the, um, only the rounds of golf that were approved by, um, the golf commission and then obviously approved by the council next meeting, council had. But if you take a look at the amount of rounds, the round, amount of donations that were approved by the golf commission, there's five out of the seventeen that were requested. So it's a pretty low number. I was under the impression it was going to be a pretty easy chore to get the amount redeemed, but what it turns out is that the, the ones redeemed were attached to the reporter receipts, daily reporter receipts, and then those got filed into filing cabinets, and there's approximately two hundred and seventy folders of daily receipts in them. I've begun looking through about a third of those so far, have not come up with a single donation round as it has been redeemed. It's just, it's a long process to get through all of these, manually get through all of these folders and look through the reporter receipts.
So, so i- i- an estimate of the ones that were redeemed, like a rough, you know, real rough estimate?
Two or three out of the five.
And then that's how much, equates to how much money? Roughly, I know, I'm not holding you into that.
Seven hundred dollars maybe.
Okay, okay. I think that was a question that I know, I think, I think Commissioner Rosso had had as well, so that's about roughly what we had. Okay, um...
Really, don't bust us anything until someone turns it in.
Exactly.
The organizations use them, raise money. Organizations use the donation to raise money at their events and...
Well, once again, if, if they're not redeemed, then they just might sit in someone's...
Yeah.
Or somewhere.
There's an expiration date, right?
Yes.
That's it?
One year.
I don't know why we're donating a round of golf to a private school. I just don't get that.
Um, for, for which one are you speaking of?
So, yeah, the specific one that we, I guess, had questions on was the Xavier. Yes.
On the mic.
Come on, come on, you gotta come up, Pete. Thanks, though.
Identify yourself.
Can I?
The general public would like to know who you are.
Can I take a moment to identify myself? Jonathan Zook, director of golf.
Peter, we'll send them over to your house if they have questions. That's where we want to know where you are.
Okay. Peter Fazio, uh, chairman of the golf commission.
Thanks.
Xavier housed several Berlins students in the past. They have one right now that works at the golf course, volunteers his time at the golf course, lives at the golf course since he was knee-high to a grasshopper, uh, and he's, he helps juniors with the junior clinics on his own time. So this is, you know, it's, it's a Berlins kid and, uh, we, we just try to do right by Berlins kids. It's a private school or public school, doesn't matter. He's a Berlins kid, that's why.
You're welcome. Yeah, appreciate the info. All right, so, okay, so we, we got our question answered, how many were redeemed, about what it costs, and, uh, now we have the, this particular round, uh, or a motion, so.
Okay.
Yes, Charlie? Yes.
Also an advertising aid, it's hard to quantify because...
Right.
The person that gets this certificate may bring friends with them that'll pay to play, so there's more to it than just that one round of golf.
Yep. Oh, we, yeah, we, yeah, we, we get that. Yeah, thanks Charlie for bringing that up, though, so we understand how it works. Okay, good. So, uh, other questions? If not, we'll, then take a motion?
Okay, we'll move to approve a donation for a round of golf for four, two golf carts at Timberland Golf Course to be used as a raffle prize at the Xavier High School's annual auction, a night under the stars. The event will be held at Xavier High School on Saturday, March twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Total value of the donation is two hundred and forty-two dollars.
Second. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Excuse me, agenda item number seven, also for John. Last time at the meeting, we talked about the golf course rates. There was one proposal, was one that was submitted, which was a four percent across-the-board increase. The, the golf commission had come up with an alternate, um, design for increase in fees. Uh, there was a, there was a meeting between the golf course, the golf course commission, the mayor, myself, Kevin Delaney, we went through various scenarios, and tonight you're getting basically a combination of the two, um, try to, try a different way of, of, of addressing fees at the golf course. John Zook is here to, uh, describe it. Pete DeFazio is also here, if there's any questions, repeat.
Okay, thank you. Jack pretty much explained everything, but one thing I will say is we did a collaborative effort, come up with two reductions in, in two of the senior rates, senior restricted and a senior non-restricted rates, and to make up the cost difference on those two rates, we raised the cart rate by twenty-five cents each category of the cart rate, so now we're still in balance. We felt that eleven percent increase on the seniors was, was high, and eight percent on the senior, uh, non-restricted was high also.
Okay, so now with the, with the, uh, the cart rate increase, that decreases those percentages, right, to the seniors, so it's kind of spreading it around more to, to everyone who's going to rent the cart, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Pete, Pete, you want to just come up and just, we'll ask you your, uh, opinion as well, since you're here, you know, we want to get you up here as much as possible, so, uh, so.
Fazio.
There you go, thanks Pete. So, I know we had the discussion and, you know, and we worked it out, I think, right? If everybody is, uh, really happy, we're, we're obviously working to balance the budget, but we're trying to, you know, expand the, the rate.
I think, I mean, everybody was in agreement. We had Kevin Delaney, he checked out the numbers and...
Numbers all worked, right? Everything worked?
Everything works, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's good. So we're actually, we're all really happy now, maybe. That's, that's good.
Let's pray for a good weather year and that we'll be okay.
There we go, that's good. Well, that's good to hear. All right, so, uh, you guys have any questions or...
Um, I just want to say I'm, I'm glad that, you know, a newly, um, added commission is working well with our town employees and communicating and working together, um, to do the best thing for everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate your hard work. We know, uh, you know, with, with John and the staff and the golf commission, you guys are putting a lot of time in and you're making a lot of improvements. I've heard a lot of positive things from the golf course. I'm not a golfer, so I don't go there myself, but once in a while, I walk around there, but, um, you know, I know there's a lot of positive comments and you, we're moving forward to make it a better asset to the town, so I appreciate all the work from the, from the staff and, and the golf commission. Okay, so, ready for a motion?
Okay, move to approve the two thousand nineteen Timberland Golf Course rates.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Agenda item number eight is also for the golf course. There was a change in, in the way that volunteers are viewed at the golf course. They had been, previously been allowed to donate their time, specifically the Rangers, and in exchange, they would be giving, given a certain amount of golf, free golf in exchange. Uh, that, that has been determined by the department, Connecticut Department of Labor as an unacceptable arrangement, and therefore, we're having to, uh, put money into the budget to pay the Rangers going forward.
Connecticut Department of Labor. Okay, so that's about all we got, right?
Basically, some.
That's why we're, we're here.
There also.
All right.
Self-explanatory.
Yeah, self-explanatory.
Okay.
Motion.
I will move to approve the transfer of thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars from the contingency to starters and Rangers, for twelve thousand dollars to workman's comp for four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and to social security for nine hundred and eighteen, for a total amount not to exceed of thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars to cover the salary, golf Rangers, cart haulers for the months of April, May and June two thousand nineteen.
Second on that? Thank you very much. Any further, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thanks.
If I could just add that this, the numbers are incorporated into the two thousand, uh, twenty budget.
Okay.
So we won't be coming back for additional money for that.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, agenda item number nine, Ray Drummond is here to discuss, uh, requesting a, a bid waiving for the, uh, Northeast Labs. They do the testing for the, for the water supply, um, and Ray can explain why we need additional funds. Basically, what we did was we had well one B went online. Originally, I thought we only needed two quarters to ask for a waiver. Uh, the test parameters are uranium ethylates and radium two-two-six and two-two-eight, which are very expensive tests. As a result of that, the health department needed four quarters, and that caused us to have some additional money that we didn't anticipate to expend, so that's why we're asking for additional funds now.
Okay, uh, thanks. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a...
Okay, we'll move to waive the bidding requirements for Northeast Laboratories to allow for payments up to fifteen thousand dollars so that the Berlins Water Control Commission remains in compliance with water quality tests established by the Connecticut Department of Health, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Agenda item number ten is for a contract extent, extension for distinctive, distinctive tree, uh, care. Uh, we had bid that, the town had bid out the, uh, removal contract, um, and it expired on January thirty-first of this year. Contracts for, to have the on-call service, where the town can call to remove trees for the town as part of the tree, tree removal program. Uh, Distinctive Tree had won the bid last time and was, as the lowest bidder. Uh, they, they said that they were going to maintain their rates. Uh, they've done a very good job for the town. I think everyone who they've done, dealt with has been satisfied with, with, with their service, provide service to the town, also the golf course. And so in recognition of this, the, uh, the, the Public Works Department is requesting that they have an extension of the contract, uh, through, through January thirty-first of year two thousand twenty.
Okay, thanks. Any questions? If not, then take a motion?
Okay, I move to extend the contract number two thousand seventeen dash fifteen with Distinctive Tree Care LLC for one additional year through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty, tree removal services at the rate of one thousand ninety dollars per day and one hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents per hour for emergency call-in work. Funding will be provided by the established line item accounts within the fiscal years two thousand eighteen, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, department budgets.
Second. Thank you. Uh, any further, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
Okay. Agenda item number eleven, which was added, is authorization to have the town manager enter into amendment to purchase and sale agreement of, uh, eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue. Uh, that's the property on Farmington Avenue, which the town is purchasing that has four tenants in it. Uh, Steve Bruno is the owner of the property. There was a discussion in the last couple of weeks that one of the tenants was concerned about not having adequate time to move, move from the, from the, uh, location. The mayor was on the phone call with us as we, we listened to, to his request. Um, we went back, we spoke to Mr. Bruno, we came to an agreement with Mr. Bruno that he would, he would grant a, a one-month extension. Know that at least one of the tenants is already going to move out on March first. Uh, we felt that a one-month was, extension was, was, uh, was, was adequate. Uh, Mr. Bruno feels so, was that way also. Uh, he's been dealing directly with the tenants since they do lease the property from him. In exchange, um, we discussed, um, increase in the, in the compensation to, to Mr. Bruno of five thousand dollars because he's going to incur another month of expenses, he's going to lose rent from the person moving out. This funding will, um, as anticipated would be, uh, come from the grant that we've got purchasing the property. I believe that pretty much is all.
Just to add that the, one, one of the tenants in that building, you know, is business and a little bit concerned about moving, so, um, it's really, it's just, it's office space, but, and I, we haven't spoken to him yet, right?
We had the meeting with him.
I know we spoke to him, yeah, we're there in our meeting, but...
No, in, 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 in the feeling of the, of us who, who met was that current, he, he's renting from, from Steve Bruno.
Landlord.
It's part of the purchase and sale agreement. The property's supposed to be conveyed to the town, um, no tenants in it. We don't want to be landlords, in, in essence, you know, we want to, we didn't inspect the property with the intent of having anybody occupying the property, uh, so we haven't even done that type of an inspection. Therefore, we felt it's important that we got the property without any tenants in it. Steve Bruno said that he would extend it for another month. Uh, we feel that's, that's probably the best course at this point. It does show the town is working with, 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 with the tenants of the property, but, uh, Mr. Bruno did give them notice in January that they had three months to, to vacate the property. He's going to extend it, we're going to extend it another month.
That, uh, May?
Probably be, be mid-May.
Mid-May.
The letter, you know, he's, he's, he indicated, he told them at the beginning of January. I looked at the date on the letter, the date of the letter was about January seventeenth. I'm figuring we're looking at mid-May.
Mid-May, okay. Yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
The tenant's going to stay there an extra month, I imagine he's going to pay rent for an extra month.
The ones that stay, yeah, but some of the tenants are already moving out. At least one, at least, we know of at least one that's already going to vacate the property.
Bruno's going to collect the extra rent during that month and an extra five thousand dollars for us.
Well, there's also expenses, yes.
Taxes that high in the building, five thousand a month?
I, I didn't check the taxes, um, but Jim Mahoney had.
Like a lot of money, are inconvenient.
Yeah, no, well, I, I, I mean, they're just, they're just one of the tenants, you know, so I guess, I think having some trouble moving, um, so, I mean, I think the month extension hopefully will help, but we, but if we could, however we vote tonight, if we vote for the extension, if we could still talk to that tenant, so he knows that, I, I know he's gotten noticed from, from the landlord, and it's really the landlord's responsibility to, to notice them, right?
We've actually, we, we, um, Jim worked with the landlord to prepare a letter to go to the tenants, in fact, that when I leave, if, if this is approved, I leave tonight, I will contact Jim, he'll let the, the property owner know and he'll send the letters, but, um, at the same time, we're going, we've prepared letters from the town to the tenants also, and Chris Edg is prepared to go and speak with them, um, also, so we are going to make contact, but we felt the first contact should come from, from the landlord.
Yeah, I wonder if they're still...
Mr. Edg make every effort to find space in town, not move out of town?
That's, that's, that's the objective. In fact, uh, uh, the, the current property owner's already indicated to them that there's a, a space, uh, one or two buildings down. Yeah, well, we will work with them, we obviously want to keep them in town.
We have a plan for a building once we get it.
That, that, that's part of the, uh, the plan, it's going for development in that area. I'm not, I'm not sure that the developer at this point, because we had trans, we hadn't got the property. Uh, we are going forward, though, we're doing some more environmental, um, studies. Uh, we, we, today I signed the, uh, agreement with the state to put the monitoring wells in Farmington Avenue so we can monitor the property.
So we're going to let the property demolish that building?
I, you know, I'm not sure the building will be demolished. I, you know, I'm not sure the building will be demolished. I, you know, they've looked at it and, um, I think there's been some comment that the building has some value, so I think we're going to work with the, with the developer to see what they would like to do.
It seems like a nice building, at least on the face of it. I don't know what the inside, uh, behind the walls look like, obviously, but.
We didn't do, that, that was part of the concern when we, when we talked about the extension, um, is that we don't want to become landlords because we didn't do an inspection with the thought that we would become landlords. So, you know, in, in that respect, the town would be incurring some liability, and we didn't feel it was proper for us to take that liability on.
All right, any other questions? Uh, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to enter into an amendment to the agreement to purchase eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue and to extend the closing date to May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, to increase the purchase price by five thousand dollars to two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Now we are to our appointments. We have, uh, make a few appointments tonight, if we could. Um, first one would be the, uh, the Board of Ethics, if we can have a nomination, one nomination.
Nominate George Millard for the first vacancy in the Board of Ethics.
Thank you. Uh, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, and, uh, all those in favor, Mr. Millard?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, moved. Um, uh, commission for the aging.
Skip to that one, okay. I will nominate, uh, Kathleen Murray.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Ms. Murray?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, moved. Uh, economic development, we have a number of people, but I'd like to make, if we can fill one spot, um, and then we could, I, I got to talk to, uh, I'd like to talk to the chairman, let him, I don't know if he's spoken to all the, uh, there's still another one. I think there's a second spot, and we've got several, several candidates for that spot, so I'll, I'm kind of trying to defer to him and let him do, do some of, I know he's talked to some of them already. So one, he, uh, has expressed an interest in, if we could have nomination for, uh.
Okay, uh, for the Ethics Board, I'll nominate Tim Grady.
For, for, uh, EDC?
EDC, sorry.
EDC, Economic Development.
What did I say?
Okay, so we have a, that's, all right, so we have a nomination with, uh, Joe Grady. Any other nominations? Hearing none, close the nominations. All those in favor, Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
I just would like to point out.
Yes.
That, um.
What spot, is it the spot we got to?
Yeah, no, it's okay, but more than, I, I'll double check it, but more than likely that second vacancy.
Okay.
Will only be filled with a D or U.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So we'll have to look at that.
Gotcha. Yeah, well, well, yeah, so it's good we waited, then, so we figure that out. Okay, good, um, and we can do, uh.
V and A.
V and A, right, we have one lady for V and A.
I'll nominate Brenda Chira.
Okay, thank you. Um, nomination on the floor, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, uh, close the nominations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that is what we can do tonight. And, oh, yeah, now. We are on our town managers report.
All right. Well, the first thing on there is that we are working on the budget, and I think, I don't think I have to tell you anything, but it's a tight budget year. Um, it's my responsibility to have a budget submitted to the Board of Finance by March first. Uh, Kevin and I are probably in our last draft of the budget. Um, I will say one of the new expenses included, because I've heard, I've heard, discussed a, a couple of different areas, is the money for the school security staff and school security projects. Those, those make up a good part of the, of the increase this year, uh, but they are both, uh, in the, in the, in my budget proposal, which will go to the Board of Finance, uh, on March first. Um, those on the ordinance committee, I, um, as long as everyone's in agreement, we will have that scheduled for next Tuesday on the twenty-sixth, six-thirty. Um, on the agenda will be under control of dogs, the golf commission ordinance requiring budget balancing, property tax abatement ordinance, and temporary sign ordinance. Uh, the one that's, um, we are probably, important one, and it's come up several times, is the under control of dogs. I have met with a resident recently who, um, experienced a, a, a dog bite a few years ago. Um, we went through all of the information on this, and it's probably, this was done, again, a few years ago, uh, two thousand and sixteen. Um, we decided to go back and issue, uh, a, a summons, or not a summons, but a, um, a restraint order on the person with the dog. Uh, the owners, the person who was bit came before us, um, was very concerned about the situation. Gone back, talked, we talked to Jeff Donofrio, and we carefully worded it, but we have issued a restraint order on the dog. Um, so I think we need to, we need to look at this carefully, because I've, I've had several people continue to call me about this issue, um, and the concern of what does, um, does under control mean. I will say in the, in, in the file, um, Denise McNair issued a very carefully thought-out, um, um, decision one time, and I really, I, I use this as, as part of the basis, is, in her opinion, um, if a person left the dog outside and was not outside with the dog, the dog was not under control. I thought that was a very good, very good point, a very valid point. Um, and so that's why we went back and we looked at this decision a couple of years ago, and I thought Denise had done a good job doing the research, and we, and so we went back on this. I, I, I bring that up only because this issue, um, has come up, you know, I won't say every day, but I do get numerous calls on this, on, on full concern about what leash law and what we should do as far as controlling dogs.
Um, was that dog bite, uh, the park?
No.
No.
On the street.
On the street.
Street. I mean, and, and some of the, and again, the, the leash law that we're talking about, it's not just.
No, it's the whole town, right, right.
Remember, some of the people who came to the ordinance committee meeting were talking about being in their own yards.
Right.
I think, I think we need to clarify that, and, um, I, I am getting, probably of, of the issues that I, I see here, um, I probably get more calls on that one than any other one.
Okay, so, I mean, it's good we're talking about it. We've talked about it before, we've tried to come to a happy concession with everyone, you know, there's obviously people on both sides of the issue with the dogs, and, um, you know, so we're, we're, we're working on it, we'll, we'll work on it.
Um, on the positive side, the, um, Timoney and Jeff Donofrio have been working with the state of Connecticut on a community center grant. Uh, they finally got the, the wording that we're concerned about, they've got it clarified. I think there's one more iteration of, of the contract, so at the next council meeting, we'll bring that before you, to, for your authorization, to signature, and move that forward. Uh, that's required because, uh, the Public Building Commission is requesting funds to start the study, and the funds for their study would come from that grant. Um, just, I, I thought, I didn't know if anybody was, was starting to think about this, but, yeah, we're getting toward the end of February. We've had a few storms recently, we're supposed to have one again, I believe, tomorrow into Thursday. Uh, I checked with Kevin Delaney, right now we have about forty thousand dollars remaining in the salt account. We do have salt in the barns, so we're in pretty good shape there. Um, we have still approximately sixty-three thousand dollars in storm-related overtime account, uh, which is, um, better. We're, we're at about twenty-three thousand dollars to the good over last year at this time. Now, we get one bad storm at the wrong time, and a lot of this would go bad, and maybe I'm tempting fate, but I thought that you'd want to know.
That's good.
Um, we continue to have, uh, you know, within the, within the town ranks, um, a movement with employees. Uh, as I think you know, at the beginning of the year, we had moved Steve Karp to be the superintendent of the Highway and Grounds Department. Um, last week, they, uh, interviewed, and Danny St. Jare is now the new foreman of the Highway Department. He is a town employee, and, and we like to, we typically like to be able to move people within the department up. Uh, so we had several people interview for the job, and, and, uh, they selected Danny St. Jare as their, as our new foreman.
Right.
Um.
Congratulations.
I think Ray's not here, but, uh, they have done the interviews for the apprentices, for the water and sewer departments. Uh, we're proud of this, of this program. Um, anticipated will start in early March, where we'll have people from different departments re, um, go and, and, and act as an apprentice, mostly the first time around, uh, just to watch what they're doing in the water and sewer department, to see if they have interest in that. Uh, you know, we, we do have to worry about, um, as employees start to get closer to retirement age, that we want to be able to replace them. It's not easy to get people to move into those positions, so we had several people interested, and, uh, so we're starting the apprentice program in early March. Um, we also finalized an agreement with a WPI sophomore, uh, to work as an interim with Ray Jerome this summer. He was looking for that, and, uh, we were able to get an interim, um, work, it's a, it's a Connecticut, uh, student who goes to WPI, a sophomore. She did get an A in thermodynamics, I figured she was a pretty sharp kid.
That's all.
Didn't get an A in thermodynamics. Um, Timberland Golf Course staff, uh, with pro, uh, we've had, we've been, we have meetings, regular meetings about the, well, we've reinstated the meetings about the golf course. One of the things we talked about, and, and it came up, if you remember, November, about having a winter fest at the golf course. Well, the time to talk about a winter fest at the golf course is not November, December, it's now. We're starting to look at that for next year. We've talked about having a skate, skating, um, tobogganing, um, you know, um, Mark Bayram, the, the pro there suggested that he would, he'd like to look into getting, um, simulated golf that we could into the, the tent. Uh, we thought to do some heating in the tent. We started to put that together, um, you know, we're going to have a meeting, I believe, at the end of this, I think Thursday. Um, Pete and, and John are coming to the meeting, we're going to talk about this. Um, we feel it's a way of, 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 one, bringing some revenue at the golf course in the wintertime. People don't usually play too much golf in winter. Um, the other thing we felt is that it's going to help, a lot of courses, you're trying to build family fun, and if you have people there doing other things, they may also take interest in golf in the spring. Uh, also in being involved is Remzi, uh, who runs the, the, the restaurant. We felt that that would be also a good chance to advertise the, the restaurant, so, um, we're going to meet on Thursday to discuss this.
Sounds like a great plan, so luck, hopefully we get that. We got, well, we got a whole year, hopefully we'll get it, we'll get it together, right, for next year.
That's, that's the idea.
We'll get it together.
Um, recently, uh, well, it's not recent, this has come up a couple of times in the last year or two. There's a concern about where, it's not a big issue, but there's a, there's a host computer that hosts the Golf Now and, and other software at the golf course. It's housed in the, um, the Golf Pro's office, and we have to actually log into through his system to get the, get the information we need for our finances. It, it, it's, it's not the best arrangement, and, and, uh, the finance department and, and some of the, and we've had meetings and the business continuity that this is not the best way to be operating that. Um, Jarvis Staggin did some research along with, uh, Mark Bayram, they found that, uh, it's, it's not going to be, and I believe in John Zook, they've worked on this. Uh, it's not going to be that big a deal, and we're going to be able to move server, or relocate the software. I don't know if we're going to actually move the server, but we're going to relocate the software out of the Golf Pros and make it more available to, accessible to the town. It takes some of the, it takes some of the, uh, the, uh, I don't want to say pressure, but responsibility off the Golf Row, it lets him spend more time working on the golf. It puts, uh, puts the responsibility back on the town, so we're able to, we're easily get the data that we need for, uh, for, for the finance department.
Great.
Then the last one, uh, the last item on here is not, is unfortunately very sad, but we felt, I felt it was important that we, we may have got an email to this effect, but I wanted to make sure that, uh, we recognize Mary Ann Soroka. She passed away on February eighth. She had been a longtime employee, uh, she worked in the assessors office starting the year two thousand, and moved to the town clerk's office in two thousand and five, and worked for, uh, for Kate, two thousand and five until the present. And, uh, fortunately, we've lost her, and, uh, he was a, I will say, a very, I guess, a very happy person, uh, just a joy whenever you, it matters, she was always upbeat. Anyway, I wanted to make sure the council was aware that we did recognize her, such.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, uh, now she was a great employee, and, and it's sad, you know, well, obviously. Way too young, uh, for, for that time of passing, but, uh, sweet condolences, went to the family and, uh.
Um, one of the, uh, one, a couple of the, um, of the, of the, uh, one of our employees, uh, they're going to put together a small flower area outside of, of the, uh, town hall, if memory is, uh, that's if they could do that, we've talked about it, we felt it was a good idea, so we're going to have a small area for a flower garden.
Absolutely, great. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, special committee reports, uh, what do we got, the playing field?
Yeah, just, uh, we did meet with the playing fields committee this week, uh, Peter was there and Charlie. Um, it was good to hear that, you know, the parking recs department's working with the various different leagues, trying to accommodate everybody in the field, the use of the fields, and, um, at points, and there are times when, um, it is tough to schedule things. So I, I know we've always been looking for maybe possibility of new fields, so Jen was going to still look into that possibility and try and figure out how we can move down that road. Um, and another thing that came up was that we are in the process of, not to bid soon, the Scully's Field resurfacing, and there seems to be a big push now up in Hartford with many legislators wanting to ban the installation of the typical turf fields that are out there today, so what do we do?
I, I, I don't know if, uh, if, um, Jen shared with you, she, you and I spoke, and, and I agree with her, that we thought that the town should weigh in. So she did write, um, and submit a, a, a letter, uh, expressing our opinion, our opinion that we oppose that ban on synthetic turf. And I can tell you from my experience, uh, many of the schools this, this year had a difficulty getting in their soccer, their field hockey games because of the amount of rain that they had. Um, I know the school that my daughter goes to had to relocate their field hockey games to fields that had synthetic turf. So, um, because of the amount of rain. So I, I, you know, I think that there, there has to be some recognition to, um, to the schools and to the, the recreation departments about the amount of use these fields get. We have a difficult time making, maintaining them. If it's a natural-esque field, and it gets the amount of play that the Berlin fields get, it's difficult to maintain those fields, keep them in good condition. You have to actually have time when you let the fields just rest.
Yeah.
And that doesn't help the situation that you're in.
Yeah, and there are other options, even though they are more expensive for more environmental friendly, um, you know, portions of these fields that are built, but, you know, you have to weigh the cost of natural resources that has to be expended. I mean, you can, there are new fields that use different kind of fill, or there's cork involved, or there's nutshells or whatever, but you still have to water the fields almost as if it was a real grass field. Um, so, and the costs of those are almost fifty percent or more of what we're going to spend. Um, so I hope that if we, you know, we're going to move forward, but at least it'll be grandfathered in if there's that much support up in Hartford. Uh, and something like that passes, and they don't make it retroactive, because that would be a, a real problem. Because I think we need to get the field done. Um, been told every year, budget season, it's on the list, that we do a great job maintaining it, that we can get another year out of it. So we've always done that, but the time has come. I think, uh, Shelton, another town that just has a field that's like fifteen years old, and they're going through the same thing. So, you know, it's time, and I hope that doesn't pass.
Is, is there any way the state could stop us in the middle of a project?
I don't, I don't think that, I think the way the law is written, it would be, um, if, if you haven't contracted it, you'd probably have to stop, but I think what's his contract, well, depends. As, as Brendan said, one of, one of the, um, variant variations of, of what I've read is that they would actually, um, if you want to take an extreme measure, would require that fields that are in place be torn out. And, and, and I think that that would be, you know, that's, that's a big onus on, on a lot of towns, and, because a lot of towns have synthetic fields. There's a, there's a, I don't want to say a push, but many towns are going in that direction, just as we are in Berlin, because it, it's, there's a lot of cost involved with having a natural field. I mean, I love playing natural grass when I played, but, you know, it's difficult with the budgets and things that we have, and the amount of play that these fields now get, to have a field that's not, that's, you know, some type of a synthetic field. If you, there's, there's such a market difference, um, you know, this year when we traveled around, watched the field hockey games, a lot of these kids are playing, and the amount of rain they're getting, they're playing on, on fields that are torn up, um, and they're probably unsafe because of the condition the fields are in. There's standing water on these fields, and it's difficult for them to get, get to play. They can go to another field where it's a synthetic artificial turf, and, and, and the field's in very good condition.
I'm not arguing natural versus the synthetic.
I know what you're, you're asking, yeah.
A lot of experts think the synthetic is fa, uh, safer too, with the new pads that go under them for impact and so forth. And the big worry was the carcinogenic effect of the ground rubber, but now they're coating the rubber with something, about some of that. I'm, I'm not against the field, I'm just worried that you get in the middle of a project and the state says you can't do it.
I wish I could predict that accurately for you, um, you know, my feeling is that you go forward with the project. I don't think that they're going to, I, I don't see how they can say to the, all the towns that, one, you're going to tear them up if you put them down, or two, if you're in the process, I think there's got to be some, you know, I'm, I'm not sure I should say it, but reasonableness about this, and, and, you know, the towns.
It's the state legislature you're talking about.
Yeah, I, I had a moment there.
I mean, yeah, no, we have a brother in the paper, right, and we're thinking, thinking we're going forward, and God forbid they change our minds.
I think, I think you, you go with your plan and, and, and just keep moving along. But I agree with that.
Yeah, no, we're, we're waiting so long, we want to get it done.
Go ahead.
That's all, okay, I don't think there was any other committee meetings, right, no? So we'll, we'll have our, um, um, ordinance committee the.
It's Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, six-thirty.
Make it join?
Okay, great. I think Peter, I think Peter emailed, he can make it.
Peter said he gave us a half, so we, we thought we had, we were thinking.
Right.
I wasn't sure what a half was, but.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll just, we'll move forward with it anyway, just so we can get some, you know, we can get some stuff going. So that's that. So council communications, anybody?
The only thing I want to say is, um, maybe we take no action on executive sessions, since not everybody's here.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah, we, we are missing a couple of members, so I wonder, though, if, uh, Denise back there. Gee, thanks, guys. Um, so may, maybe what we could do is just, let's just, we'll, we'll go in, we'll just finish the minutes, and then we'll, maybe we'll just go into the executive session for a few minutes just to get some, a little bit of, uh, explanation. Denise, at least for those of us that are here, but we won't, you know, we'll, we'll, we can have another executive session while, while she's here, and, you know, I don't want to send her away, because she'll be disappointed if she doesn't get to talk to us, I'm sure. We made her wait this long, so, just, just for a few minutes, but, but then, then we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, we can be next time, so. Anyway, before we get to that, just our acceptance of minutes on January twenty-second, we get a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Uh, so. So now we will make...
You're outranking me.
Well, I just, you know, I feel, I feel bad Denise's here, we can at least maybe get a little information and...
Okay, no problem.
Think about it until next time.
It'll be brief.
It'll be brief, so we'll make a motion to go into executive...
Okay, I make a motion to go into Executive Session, Personnel Matters, Connecticut General State Statute, Section one dash two hundred six, Part A, concerning appointment, employment, performance, evaluation of a public employee, Mr. Jack Healy.
Second.
Thank you, so we'll invite in Corporation Counsel and Denise.